Evening. It is 7:30 PM on September 22, 2025, and I would like to call to order the meeting of the Lisle Community Unit School District 202 Board of Education. Ms. Sims, could we please have a roll call?
Sure. Ms. D. Domenico?
Here.
Mr. Helderly?
Here.
Mr. Nagler?
Here.
Ms. Nova Cell?
Here.
Ms. Foster isn't present. Ms. Sims is here. And Ms. Allman?
Here. Thank you. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is our Lisle 202 mission statement, which is to provide our learning community with the essential education skills and experiences for future success. So we'll keep those thoughts in mind as we meet this evening. Next on the agenda is our public hearing for the fiscal year 2026 budget. An annual budget is to be adopted by all public school districts, and prior to taking final action on the budget, the school board must hold a public hearing. The public hearing is an opportunity for the public to provide input on the budget. Illinois law requires that the Board of Education first adopt a tentative budget, which took place at the June 23, 2025, regular board meeting. The tentative budget has been available for public inspection since June 23, which is at least 30 days prior to tonight's public hearing. A breakdown of each individual fund comprised of the estimated beginning balance, estimated revenues by fund, estimated expenditures by fund, and the ending balance is provided in the budget summary, which was reviewed in detail with administration over the past several months by the Board Finance Committee of the whole. The Board is pleased that the school district will have another balanced budget in the operating funds for the current school year. For the 2026 fiscal year across all funds, estimated direct revenues are $45,253,517. And estimated direct expenditures are $46,83,662. The excess expenditures are the result of capital outlay projects or costs for the Lisle Junior High School HVAC replacements and theater stair renovations. The cash balance of funds related to the school district's operational levy was $40,502,632 as of July 1, 2025. The budget is filed with the county clerk within 30 days of adoption and posted on the school district's website. At this point, the Board of Education will open the hearing for any members of the public who would like to make oral comments or submit written comments regarding the budget. In accordance with board policy, the Board will not be addressing comments or questions during the hearing, but will provide an opportunity for individuals to share their thoughts and suggestions. At this time, are there any public comments on the hearing?
I did not receive any in writing either.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing that all persons desiring to be heard have been given the opportunity to present oral and written testimony with respect to the proposed budget, and that the Board has taken the statements under advisement, I would ask for a motion and second to adjourn the public hearing, followed by a roll call.
So moved.
Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, and if we could have a roll call, please.
Mr. Nagler?
Aye.
Mr. Helderly?
Aye.
Ms. Nova Cell?
Aye.
Ms. D. Domenico?
Aye.
Ms. Sims is aye. Ms. Allman?
Aye.
And Ms. Foster isn't here.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Next is our regular public comment session. Is there any public comments? Or were there any submitted in advance?
There were not.
Okay, and I see no blue cards presented. So we're at item six, which are our action items, 6A consent agenda. Before I begin, is there anything on the consent agenda that anybody would like to pull for further discussion? Okay. With that, we have 6A consent agenda, 6A1, board meeting minutes, 6A2, payroll pay orders, 6A3, vendor pay orders, 6A4, personnel, 6A4A, certified employment, 6A4B, classified employment, 6AC, 6A4C, extra duty employment, 6A5, recognition of booster organizations, 6A6, shared services or outsourcing report, 6A7, fiscal year ending June 30, 2026 budget, and 6A8, snow removal services bid addendum for the school year 2025 to 2026. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Somebody want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. If we could please, thank you. That's Mr. Helderly and Ms. Domenico. And if we could please have a roll call.
Mr. Helderly?
Aye.
Ms. D. Domenico?
Aye.
Mr. Nagler?
Aye.
Ms. Nova Cell?
Aye.
Ms. Sims is an aye. Ms. Foster is not present. And Ms. Allman?
Aye. Thank you. Item seven is our financial information, and the Board acknowledges receipt of the following reports, 7A, financial report, 7B, treasury report, 7C, compensation reports, which are in our packet. Anybody have any questions on those? Okay. Item eight is discussion items. First is our freedom of information requests, and those were in the packet. Anybody have any additional comments on those? 8B, there was no public comment from the prior meeting to follow up on. 8C is the superintendent's report.
I'll make that short tonight because we do have a lengthy school improvement plan presentation from the junior high, but included in your board information, a lot of exciting things since our last board meeting at the elementary, a number of different activities, really trying to build that foundation on character, and in terms of, you know, what it means to be a good person, what it means to be a leader. The one that I was able to attend, though, that was extremely exciting was Tim Hanning from Pro Kids. It was this incredible pep rally that had a lot of student activity. Students really, really enjoyed it, but with an overall theme of what it means to be a pro kid, aka, you know, a good person that helps others. And so, a lot of excitement there. The junior high, they were proud to share that the new technology teacher, Mrs. Braun, is going to be offering in conjunction with DuPage County Regional Office, an after-school STEM workshop. So they have three that were listed in your board information. Hopefully we have a number of students who are interested in being able to attend that. And then finally, I think many of you were able to attend the homecoming game, and I know that the game is on Friday, and it's very exciting and very well attended. Would have been nice if we got a W, but I think it was a good game all the same, but a lot of because of us being a unit school district and only having one building at each level. I mean, we're all Lisle Lions, and so had an opportunity to have the high school students come to the elementary and have a pep rally, which was very well attended. I actually think the high school kids enjoyed it as much, if not more, than the elementary because they were the leaders, getting the students excited, in some cases, seeing teachers they hadn't seen for a number of years. But overall, a great event. The junior high had very similar type of homecoming events at their building, and then the high school the whole week long. I mean, just so much excitement, so much enthusiasm for what the week meant for everyone. And so, a great tradition, and I really think the high school students just look forward to this being an opportunity to kind of show freshmen versus sophomore juniors and seniors, but actually, building-wide, really coming together to cheer on the Lions for that Friday game. And then that professional development we had listed, the junior high and high school have been really leaning closely into doing professional development together, having conversations as to making sure that by this time, students come from the junior high to the high school, that they're ready, and that each of the teachers know what's being taught at each of the levels. So at the junior high, know what the expectations are, and at the high school, knowing that, kind of things that were covered to make sure there's no gaps or too many overlaps. Any questions related to the superintendent report or something you'd like to add?
I just wanted to add that there were several families that I talked to from ALIS, where the kids told them they had to go to the game because of the pep rally and how neat it was. So it was really impactful, and it's a great thing. And also, just a couple shout-outs to, you know, homecoming week and organizing, and I know Erin Kern oversees that at the high school, and it's a lot of work. It was very successful from decathorama right up until the dance, I understand. And also want to thank the district for the family night, and especially Marilyn Buckholz for all the work that she did for that. So thank you.
Are we sure to pass that along? Thank you.
Yes. Well, with that, we have item 8D, which is our school improvement plan, and we'll invite the Lisle Junior High down administrative staff.
Good evening. Thank you again for giving us the opportunity to come in and share all the wonderful things and all the hard work that we've put in the last year and the results we have from that, plus all the goals that we have for this coming up year. So we'll get to that. Tori, are you sending us up here? All right. Before we get started, I know you've heard me say this a million times, but how proud I am to be principal of Lisle Junior High for a lot of reasons. Obviously, it's the support of the community, support of the school board, district administration, students that we have, our staff. And that pride has always been there. It's my 22nd year, and I truly believe that the junior high is in the best place we've ever been. From, again, just the support that we have, the staff that we have, obviously, the administrators that you see here with me, the team that we have together, our teaching staff, as you know, is incredible. Not only great at what they do, but are truly, really good people, who care a lot about the kids, which makes obviously all the difference. That's what we all want for our own kids and for our kids at our school. And just the supports that we have in place for our kids to be successful when it comes to the curriculum changes that we've made the last few years that you can hear about it again tonight, from the student services department, from all aspects of it. And we're going to share some of it tonight. I wish we could share all of it. But again, I feel so good and so proud of where we're at, and looking forward to sharing that with you. So as we go through this table of contents, I'm going to hit a little bit about the social emotional learning. Lindsay Norwood will talk a little bit about student services, and then Tor and Vino hit curriculum instruction assessments and results, and then we'll all hit kind of the five essentials, and then our action plan. Talking a little bit about social emotional learning, again, you've heard me say a million times how important this is, especially at the junior high level. We still use our pride system. This is what we look for in students. This is how we reward students. This is the expectation we have for our students. The P is for participation. Again, you've heard me say a million times, the kids are tired of hearing it, but I really want them to get involved in something outside of just the academic school day. And we have consistently been, over 95% of our students have been involved. I think last year was around 97%. And I do think this year will be the year that we meet our goal of all 100% of our students. We've had a couple new clubs being promoted, and some students getting involved in there, and just watching and listening and having our assembly, and just being able to celebrate what we've done so far. We have over 100 athletes participating in the fall between cross-country baseball and softball. Girls' basketball is starting up today. Our band program is almost 50% of our students are in band. As you know, we've always had a strong program, and that number keeps increasing. Mr. Stelmacher's done a great job with choir, so we have an increase in amount of choir students. And again, all the clubs and activities have started, and we've got Dr. Slowak with game club this week, and student council's starting up. So again, just the numbers just keep increasing. So I really feel we're going to get everybody involved this year. And then going through, not only participation and outside of school, but of course, within the school day, in class, we want the students to be actively engaged in participating in discussions and participating in class and supporting each other, which you'll see as we go through the five essentials, kind of the results we had and the work we put in for that. And then just going through integrity, obviously. Again, just kind of talk to the kids about, you know, making the right decisions, even when no one's watching, and all the things and being strong. Determination's always a big one in middle school, and again, it's easy to give up if things get hard, but we really want our kids to push through and work as we're challenging them. And again, as the rigor has gone up, they have had those challenges, and they've been meeting them, and you'll see again in the results coming up. And then obviously empathy and support for each other and treating each other with respect. In our SCL program, we do spend a lot of time on executive functioning, skills development, especially in the first month of school. That's what we use our SCL days for. We do skill-specific lessons throughout that grade room time, and then this year, we've really focused on trying to do more outside of just, we teach it in homeroom, but we also extend it through the class period. So if you have an eighth grader, you're kind of seeing, kind of with Ms. Blatchley's brought in a binder system for organization and different things like that to support, get the kids ready for high school, and we kind of scaffold it by the grade level and the expectations, help support the sixth graders as they're coming in with the transition to junior high, and then obviously build on that seventh grade and then eighth grade, preparing them for high school. Needs-based instruction, we do a lot of gathering student feedback and teacher feedback to kind of see where we're at and what we need during the school year. So we sent out a connection survey. We always do that in the fall to find out, make sure students are connected with a staff member in the building, but also, again, participating in different things. And just, we did a lot of things with safety last year, which again, we'll hit when we get to those five essentials, working, making sure students are safe, feeling safe in the building. So depending on how that feedback comes in, and again, it's been very strong this year, all the work that we've done up to this point is definitely showing, and we've done base it off of that. So if there's any extra needs that we need, then we will throw it into our SCL lessons during homeroom. And then if students that need additional SCL support, obviously go in our small group interventions, and again, a lot of that would fall on our student services departments, which we have an outstanding department with social workers and psychologists that you've always, again, I always appreciate the fact that you've supported us in that, in needs at the junior high level.
So I'm going to take a little bit of time to talk about our student services department and kind of highlight some of our needs. Our next slide, that's okay, Slide 7, just gives you a breakdown of our student population that we've already identified as having some needs outside of what our general education classrooms support. So we have 21 students currently that have 504 plans. There is an asterisk there because we do have three open evaluations for additional 504 plans. That's roughly 6% of our population, which is just an increase of 1% from last year. We have 45 total students that have been identified as needing specialized instruction, and there are students with IEPs. Forty of them are for academic or social emotional needs, and then we have five that are speech-only. That can look a little different at the junior high. It's not just articulation and sounds and things like that. It can be vocabulary, expressive, or receptive language and things like that. That is 13% of our population, which is an increase of 1% from last year. And then we have 88 students in our student body who receive regular psych or social work support, which is 25% of our population. That did not change in terms of percentage from last year, but because our building grew in general, we had about 70 students that were continuously seeing our psychs and social workers for a variety of different reasons. This year, we have 88, but our building also grew quite a bit. So although the percentage hasn't changed, our psych and our two social workers are working very hard to meet the needs of those students. And that looks different depending on what the student is struggling with. Some students came into sixth grade already identified as having a need from the elementary school, but we also do an SEL screener every year that gives us a beat on how the students are feeling, whether they're internalizing any behaviors, whether they are, you know, feeling connected or motivated or things like that. And then we have the typical students that pop up because there's a family stressor of some sort, a parent who's ill, a divorce in the family. And so, we want to make sure all of those students are supported emotionally, so they are ready to learn when they're in the classroom. We also do our signs of suicide screener at various grade levels every year, and that also helps to identify some students that might be either reporting self-harm from themselves or for a peer, and then obviously, we scoop up those children and make sure that they are properly supported, either in our building or that their parents have the proper resources to get them some help outside of school. So again, I just wanted to say, our department is amazing. We were fortunate enough to be granted a full-time second social worker right after the pandemic. And so, I know, I sat in front of you guys about five years ago and said, we need help, and you were kind enough to say, that sounds like a definite need. And so, we feel very confident that we are able to support these students because we have three full-time people in that position. And at the junior high, our full-time psychologist, Jenny Reband, is not just in charge of IEPs and testing and things like that. She counsels students as well. So because we have a full-time person at the junior high, she's able to manage her caseload, but also meet the needs of some students as well. So that's wonderful. Our next slide.
Oh, if I get one question. So being that our bubble is second grade through sixth grade, so there'll be even more students, so if you're still at 25%, as you mentioned mathematically, you know, it'll go up. Do you feel you have adequate resources now? And what should we look at the next year's? As we'll assume that 88 will go up as larger classes come through. So do you anticipate any need, or, obviously, you can't have a crystal ball, so you don't know how many students, but just like one, how much, how full is your resources now?
For sure. So I can confidently say that the students that we've identified, I feel like we can service if that number continues to grow. And we might have to think outside the box a little bit. One of the things that you'll see on our action plan later is continuing to build relationships with outside agencies and really making sure that our families feel supported, and that if there is a need for some outside therapy, that we are helping parents to identify those resources, get them set up with some outside agencies. DuPage County has a really robust mental health department that they are helping a lot with. We actually have some people come in and help us with our signs of suicide screener as well. And so, right now, what I can tell you is we feel good about it. I don't know what the future holds, to be honest, but I'll come to you when I need help.
Thank you. And that's what I wanted to hear at the end. So, and then the second question, as you see here, the sourcing of these students, and later slides are some great numbers, so I don't want to steal anybody's thunder coming up, but is there a connection between the service you're doing now and those increases in the meets and exceeds later?
So I think that one of the reasons why we service the population that we do is because all the research says, if you are feeling some kind of way, you're not going to learn. And so, we want to make sure students feel safe and comfortable, that students are able to manage their anxiety, that students are able to manage their workload. If they're having troubles at home, that they feel like they have a trusted adult. Our climate and connection survey that we sent out was really powerful because it actually, we go as far as to ask the students to list their trusted adults. And so, we send those lists to teachers and staff members. We even had one of our bus drivers, I think, seven kids put, seven kids put Ms. Mary, bus driver for bus two, which is awesome. But we want to make sure that those people know, this is the list of students that may come to you. I mean, everyone's window of stress tolerance is different, but if I know that one kid put me as a trusted adult, I want to make sure I'm continuing that connection and saying hi in the hallways, making sure I have time to talk to those students when they ask. And so, while I can't tell you there's a direct correlation, I definitely think that what we're doing is good work to help the students feeling, they're feeling ready to learn when they're sitting in those classrooms.
Excellent. Thank you.
So our next slide has to do with ELM bilingual services. I know, again, last year, I sat in front of you and said, we had to hire a bilingual teacher, a full-time bilingual teacher, because our number of Spanish-speaking students rose to 20 or higher. And so, we continue to have bilingual services available at the junior high. In addition to just EL services, all of our students that have different heritage languages that have not reached a certain level of English proficiency are receiving support from either our EL teacher, Joanna Ing, or our bilingual teacher, Tammy Saltsba. We have seven different languages right now of students in our building, and that continues, that's just what I found in terms of students that get support. So it could actually be higher than that. Of the students that are receiving support for English language learning, 68% of them are Spanish speakers. And out of our entire population of students needing EL support, 20% of them are receiving intensive language support. And what that means is, they are in a program that's called full-time transitional bilingual education, which means they're supported throughout their day. So those students have an English language arts period that is co-taught with our bilingual teacher, Tammy Saltsba, and they are also in, later on in the day, a bilingual resource period where she can hit any of their additional needs in their heritage language. So the students bring their work there. She can run mini lessons on any different subject matter in their heritage language. She co-teaches a class, an ELA class, in sixth grade and seventh grade and eighth grade. She has a couple of off periods where she tells the teachers, if you have independent work and you need me to pull students, or if you need to send them to me, please do, so she can kind of give them that support as needed. And it's been really helpful. So that push and support that I'm talking about here on the slide is where she is co-teaching with the ELA teachers at each grade level. And then that bilingual resource period that happens during the student study hall is their pull-out support. And she might pull them out of the ELA class, depending on what the activity is, but she's in that classroom every single day, can co-plan with the teachers, can help facilitate grading and things like that. So it's a really powerful program. We do have some students that their heritage language is not Spanish, and so we continue to have support from our EL teacher, Joanna Ing, who we share with the high school. This year, we changed her schedule a little bit. We have some newcomers, which means they have been in the United States and in American school for less than a year. And so, she is teaching an ESL one class where they really focus on learning the English language. And so our newcomers are in that class. And then she also has an ESL resource period for our students that speak a heritage language other than Spanish. And I think we have six students in that this year. And so, she's able to, similar to the bilingual program, she's able to hit any number of subject areas and really give them the support that they need to produce quality work that the teachers are looking for regardless of their language Did you guys have any questions about that? Okay.
Okay. So moving on to curriculum and instruction, as Mr. Carney mentioned, Dr. Slowak and I will tag team this a little bit, and I just want to encourage you to continue to keep this conversational. If you have questions or comments along the way, please let us know. But we are going to begin, like we did last year, with just a brief overview of our four core subject area programs. And again, this is just to reiterate what our focuses are, what programs we're using, and what our approach is in each of those. So for English language arts, this is now our third year of my perspectives implementation that we began this school year. With this, we have seen that these bullet points that we developed in the past have proven to be true, even confirming them again with our ELA team in our department meetings to start off this year, that the approach of having the integrated units of study where we are able to address all ELA grade level standards, if we can make it through each of the units, which, you know, proves to be challenging, but the more, the more times we go through the program, both our teachers and our students are able to streamline things to the point where we are, you know, more and more successful with getting through, nearing getting through all of the grade level standards and feeling that we're finding ways to make that happen, especially given the flexibility of having both a language arts class, which is where we have a full-time focus on the my perspectives program, but also then utilizing our literature class, so they get that double dose of ELA each day, and we are able to use that time to be able to continue building on those skills and hit some things that maybe we can't fit in in language arts. We've also seen that the students are responding well to the texts that are used, whether that's short stories, novels, both fiction and nonfiction. The teachers have continued to be impressed with the diversity of those texts, both the diversity of the authors, the diversity of the characters, again, and being at a level that is challenging to the students, but also relevant for them to connect with. And then another big advantage is the built-in performance-based assessments that are part of this program, where Where, uh, we used the example before, instead of just a multiple choice test, uh, about, you know, the, the characters in a novel or something. It's an actual essay, uh, written response summative, where they have to be able to sort of put everything together that they've been working on in class, things that they've discussed, uh, other, you know, more, uh, low-stakes writing assignments that they've had, and then being able to put it all together to show and demonstrate what they've learned and their ability to, um, meet those learning standards within each of those units, uh, through, again, an essay or a presentation, something more of a performance-based approach for that assessment. In our math program, uh, last year was our first year with the Eureka Math Squared. So, uh, the bullet point you see here, these were, um, originally based on what we were promised, um, with the, the new updated version of Eureka Math would bring. Um, and, um, we are happy to report back that, that it proved to be true. You know, we, our teachers were able to get through, um, uh, a greater amount of the grade level standards. Each grade level was, um, more aligned to what they call modules instead of units of study, but at each grade level has six units of study now. Um, and the, uh, the flow of those units, I think made more sense to both the teachers and, and students, uh, as they moved from one to the next. They're redesigned in other ways, um, sort of, uh, being able to, uh, take out, I guess, well, I don't want to call it the fluff, but that there, there was a lot of extra, um, information at times and even complexity of, of the written, um, tasks. You know, real-life world problem or word problem, application-type problems that were, um, unnecessarily complicated and, and distracted from the math. And they really did a good job of, of rewriting it in a way that it really gets to the core of what they're trying to learn. But still, you know, allows them to show that they are able to apply that learning in a real-world situation. Even the physical workbooks themselves, um, have, have definitely benefited the students more workspace with them to show their work, uh, which we always encourage because if we don't see their work, we can't really help them, uh, you know, work through with them, how to, uh, find that correct solution if we haven't seen their thought process. And then again, even the online tools themselves for both our teachers and students, um, just easier to navigate, find what you're looking for and, and have both our teachers and students benefiting from that. So it was a successful first year and we'll see more as we move on into like the I R results and, and what we saw from that. But, uh, we are encouraged that, uh, it was, you know, definitely the right move to make, um, to the updated curriculum. And, uh, we hope to continue to see those benefits. Moving on to science, um, in science, just a reminder that we utilize the Open SciEd, uh, units of study. It is a free resource, um, but it was developed, um, similarly to like the approach with even making the Common Core standards and next-generation science standards. Um, it's a collaboration between higher education and, and K-12 educators to be able to write, um, units of study that really approach learning science as a scientist, you know? So it's definitely, um, you know, no lecture of any kind. And it's really hands-on getting the students to be the ones that are doing the problem solving and, you know, basing it off of a, something that they're seeing in the real world and, and needing to use those investigative skills that they're developing to figure out why things are happening the way they're happening. Um, and they, you know, all types of phenomenon, whether they're talking about weather or, you know, all fields of science. And again, the, it's sort of nice because in, yes, the content is important, uh, in middle school, but it's not actually the focus in science. And, you know, as they move into their high school science classes, that, that gets a lot more content-specific. But really in middle school, it's about learning, like I said, to be a scientist. There's eight sci- um, science and engineering practices that the students are learning, um, when it comes to investigating and modeling and, and then being able to even, um, interpret data and share results. And, uh, again, just that whole process of, of figuring things out and then, um, working together and then sharing what you've learned. And, uh, no, we're seeing good results from that. Um, it can be a timely process. Uh, it, it's, uh, hard to predict how long those units will take at times, but we have gotten to the point where we're covering roughly one unit per nine weeks, um, and per grade level. Sixth grade can be a little more challenging. We've talked about this before where, um, there's not a lot of direct science instruction in our elementary schools right now. And, and they'll admit that, you know, the focus has been elsewhere up to this point. So there's a lot of foundational skill building that takes place in sixth grade. But by the time that they're, you know, getting towards the end of sixth grade and then definitely into seventh and eighth grade, they're really able to apply, um, those skills that they're developing and, uh, and those practices that they're learning, uh, to be able to, um, work through, uh, those units of study more quickly. And then on social studies, uh, with social studies, we don't have a specific program that we implement. Our teachers have, um, worked really well collaboratively, our social studies team, uh, across the three grades. They have, you know, analyzed all of the middle school standards for social studies and civics education and, um, been able to determine what, what fits best where across the three grade levels so that, um, it's just a seamless approach, um, in, in order to meet those standards. Really taking more of an inquiry-based approach, again, getting away from, uh, just a lecture of, of, uh, information, but having the, the students really, um, be investigating on the social studies side of things. And, um, and, you know, looking at, um, different sources, um, whether they be primary sources, secondary sources and, and, um, you know, really digging into the information themselves to gather what they need to come to the conclusions that, that they are, um, being asked to find. And, uh, last year, we put a, a really big focus on the writing, uh, skills that we wanted them to be able to develop in social studies and help the students to see the connection between, um, what they're learning in E L A and really across the curriculum. And to add a little bit more to that, since Dr. Slowak, uh, has a background in E L A, he did a lot of work with, um, all of our departments really, but especially social studies last year. I'm going to let him speak to that.
Hi, guys. Um, yeah. So in the summer of 2024, um, science and social studies departments met together to kind of talk about informational writing and kind of get on the same page, um, because we were both using like a claim evidence reasoning type formatting for our informational writing. So, um, because that language was being used in both of these classes, we thought, you know, let's kind of combine forces here, get on the same page with what this actually means. So we spent some time over the summer to kind of flush that out a little bit, have some great organizers that we put together that we were able to deploy last year. Um, and what actually started just as a paragraphing exercise kind of evolved very quickly because we had this foundation of informational writing and what that looked like. Our social studies department felt more confident and comfortable to per- push our students a little bit more to go beyond just basic paragraphing, pushing them to write longer pieces, um, full essays. So one of our, um, social studies teachers was initial goal after we were kind of wrapping up that summer was like, oh, I just want to have kids write, you know, a few solid paragraphs altogether and ended up being able to have the kids write two full essays before the end of the year, which is really exciting. It's really, really great. Um, I loved the organizers that we put together too, because that was something, again, it was a collaborative. All four of us would meet and talk about our writing. We would share organizers together and build them out, um, to the point where I was even writing, um, on the sixth grade one, I said, Ms. Miller, your seventh grade social studies teacher, will be expecting you to understand how to navigate this organizer next year. So it was like their final piece in sixth grade, um, will be one of their first writing pieces in seventh grade that of course would be elevated a little bit more based on those new expectations that we have. But super proud of the work that they were able to put in and it was nice having this, um, pedagogical base, right? All of that work that we put in over the, the teaching of it and then being able to use an A I tech tool like Class Companion to help support that writing process as well. Um, Class Companion was the tool where the students could submit their writing and get that A I feedback based on the teacher's rubric. Um, and I think that also helped kind of expedite our writing process to get that feedback to students, improve their writing, um, and being able to get them again to write longer pieces, which is super exciting. And it's so nice too, because, you know, you invest all of this time and it takes a full year before you can really even start to see that, that growth, right? And so I was really excited to hear, um, both Jamie Miller, our seventh grade social studies teacher, and Jason Smith, who teaches seventh grade English, both reported that, uh, with a, uh, writing assignment that they had deployed normally at the, at this time of the year and maybe take five days. And now they were able to get that done in three, which is awesome. So, and the writing is good. So that's even better. So they're, uh, they're producing good work in a shorter amount of time, which means that we can get more content covered. So don't tell them that, uh, they had to fill those extra two days. Don't tell the kids that they could have taken their time. But, uh, no, it's really exciting, um, to see the, the growth that we're seeing in our students and just continuing to raise the bar and to continue to push them. It's, it's awesome.
Thank you. Um, so moving on to talking about academic acceleration. So, um, in our course subject areas, we have felt it's been very beneficial for us to keep all students, uh, together for science and social studies. Um, you know, obviously there's, um, you know, differing opinions in education about when to start, separating students out for honors or accelerated. Um, but for, for us, again, I think our students have benefited greatly, specifically in those two courses, uh, just with the conversations and discussions that take place. In both science and social studies, there's been a lot of value of having all students together in those settings. For E L A, uh, we do beginning in sixth grade and then all three years have an accelerated option. It is, you know, probably more like the high school model. Uh, we just, we call it honors literature, um, in that class. Uh, again, just more as a reminder, um, it is something that where we are looking for students that are willing to take on that extra challenge when it comes to the, um, the expectations for, uh, their written expression, um, expectations in classroom discussion, um, the level of reading, um, that's required of them, um, with the texts that they're choosing for those, for that course. It, you know, it is definitely stepping up the, the rigor all around and, uh, it is, it can be a challenging course. And, but for those that are willing to take that challenge, I think we see a lot of good growth from those students as a result. For math acceleration options, um, we do have both a single grade level acceleration, uh, option, which does start during their elementary years. Um, and then there's an opportunity, um, along the way in middle school for a double acceleration option. And just to get a more clear picture of that, we actually did include a, um, a table that, um, Meredith McCormick, myself and Megan Ewald at the high school, all, we're all working together on this. And, uh, Jenna Angler helped to make it look nice to, um, to get all the information on, on one page. Now, this is just looking at the junior high and high school portion, but just for clarity here, um, you know, the top row there would be like our general math, pathway, we'll call it. So, um, math six just means sixth grade, the sixth grade math class. They're covering the sixth grade, um, you know, state standards for math. Same then with math seven and math eight, uh, which would prepare them for algebra one as a freshman. The accelerated math class, uh, which is covering the seventh grade math standards for the state. At the end of that class, um, and this goes along, this is also the same for the, the students at the end of the general math seven, they will take a, um, algebra readiness assessment. Uh, it's not the only thing that we use for that, but it's sort of a starting point to see how they do on this algebra readiness assessment, seeing where their prerequisite skills are for what they would need to be successful in algebra, uh, looking at that along with, uh, obviously how they did in class, how they did on I Ready, I R. A lot of factors, you know, just looking at the historical trends with their assessment, uh, data, um, looking for the students that, um, we feel would be successful to make that jump into the double acceleration. For those that were just finishing the accelerated sixth grade math or those general seventh grade students, as I mentioned, that have shown, um, growth to the point where we feel like they're ready to skip the eighth grade math and go right into algebra. So that's sort of those opportunities, um, to make that jump into algebra, whether that be at the end of accelerated math for sixth graders or the end of the general math for seventh graders. Um, for those that do make that, um, that accelerate or do take that accelerated pathway, uh, just on that second line, they're just like, you know, follow that through first before we talk about the double. You know, the accelerated math would allow them to be ready for algebra one as an eighth grader, uh, which sets them up for honors geometry as a freshman. If they choose to continue down the honors, uh, courses, uh, which allows them to finish as a senior with A P calculus. Or again, if they choose, uh, they could do A P statistics. Um, for those that do make that jump to algebra after accelerated math, uh, grade six, um, now those are the ones that are going to, um, algebra one as seventh graders with the rest of the students in that class being eighth graders. Um, and then as eighth graders, starting their day at the high school. This year, we have four students doing that. Um, this year we have six seventh graders in algebra one. So we'll have a group of six, um, going over to the high school, uh, next year for a, for a first period honors geometry. And then those on that double acceleration course are, um, if they choose to, again, are going to be able to take A P calculus as a junior, which really, yes, A P statistics would be the course that's left as a senior, but, um, it does open up other possibilities if they want to get creative and, you know, work with college or DuPage or, or, you know, other things like that for that, for that, uh, fourth year of high school math after finishing calculus as a junior. Uh, any questions about that before we move on?
Can I just ask about the, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
The, the placement criteria link at the bottom of that page is, that's the same as last year? Is the growth the same as last year? The typical growth and the criteria are the same?
So I will speak first just to the academic acceleration portion of that. And so that link that you're talking about, the first slide, um, just talks about what we're looking for, for the criteria for students to be placed into that, uh, academic acceleration. Um, that is the same. As you go through those slides further on that slide deck, uh, it starts getting into our academic interventions. And that's where there were, um, uh, definitely changes in the numbers. Um, I think what happened, if you, if they looked the same to you, uh, we figured that out, um, which, again, I, I should have said this at the beginning too. We're trying to include information about the questions that were submitted to us, but if we miss something, please, please interject like you are. We realized that the link, this is more of a, just a tech thing, actually. The link that was used for this year's, um, presentation was the same as the link from last year. So when we updated, updated the numbers, um, it, it went over or like erased the ones from the year before. Uh, we still have those numbers, um, from like, you know, being able to go back and look at prior versions of the document. Uh, but those numbers were updated for this year. Um, so they, uh, were not the same as last year, but they've been updated for this year.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. That's helpful.
Yeah. I think.
So yeah, I had a question on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
The academic intervention slide. We say that for these, the 58% of students achieved typical growth. These are this year's numbers, right? Or?
Yeah, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Norwood.
Okay. I just wonder what the 43% versus the 58, but?
Sure. So, um, we, if I can go to this slide, which is on, um, our current presentation, our tier two and our tier three interventions, the criteria hasn't changed to be a part of those interventions. So for a tier two in math and reading, we're looking at students between the 10th and 35th percentile on the I Ready diagnostic. We understand that's just one data point. We look at I R, we look at classroom performance, teacher recommendation and things like that. In our writing intervention, and that's the same for math, in our writing intervention, because there isn't a good, um, percentile normative-based, um, test. We do work samples. What are the kids producing? Um, and so if you have below grade level, um, you're producing work below grade level, we kind of take a look at that and see what your area of need is and recommend you for the reading intervention. But if you have significant writing difficulties in terms of like, your organization is not there, you're having difficulty writing, um, writing in order to inform someone else in, in a, an organized way, then we look at a tier three intervention. Last year, then, so the numbers that are on your link is, um, the students that were in our tier two or tier three, um, reading intervention, out of all of the students, 58% of them achieved their typical growth. Now, when we're talking in Lyle, sometimes one student is a percentage point. And so of those, those students that made their, obviously if you don't make your typical growth, you can't make your stretch growth. So of those students, um, in the area of reading, 43% of them achieved their stretch growth, which is attainable, um, but lofty. And so what we look at is we really try to push those students to achieve their stretch growth because, um, what I Ready tells us is year after year, if you're getting your stretch growth, you're continuously closing the gap between you and your same-age peers. Um, so that's in the area of reading. In the area of, oh, math, um, in our tier two and our tier three math interventions, um, 61% of the students that were included in those interventions, uh, achieved their typical growth. And of those students, 52% achieved their stretch growth. So we feel really good about those numbers because we're talking about students that have some significant learning challenges. And if we go back to our presentation here, where I actually have numbers of who's included in each. We have 21 current students in our exploring math class, um, at each, all grade levels added together. 13 students are in our tier three, um, which means you're three or more grade levels behind in terms of your math knowledge. In reading, we have 16. or more grade levels behind in terms of your math knowledge. In reading, we have 16 students in tier two. We have 21 students in tier three. And then in our writing intervention right now, we have one student. We should have had seven, because the way our writing intervention works is we make recommendations for students to enter that class in January for part one. That goes from January until May. And then when you come back in the fall, it's part two, those same students. And then we get a new crop of students for the the following year. But six of the students in our class are no longer in our district. And so this is part two, if you remember kind of how I said, we look for students. So we only have one student right now. When we get to a further slide that kind of shows our MTSS triangle in terms of how many students are meeting our expectations in a tier one versus a tier two or tier three, you're going to see that we're doing a great job at the tier one, where almost 80% of our population is meeting expectations through just the tier one core curriculum. Our tier two are yellow band and our tier three red band are flip flopped from the way they should be. It should be a higher yellow percentage and a smaller red percentage, and it's flip flopped. Again, because Lyle is so small, one person can change that percentage. And what we're finding, again, this is not the end all be all, but what we're finding is as students are moving into our district, sometimes they have really intense needs. We have had quite a few students with special needs move into our district this year. But then also, the rigor in Lyle is much different than the rigor in some other districts. And so what we're seeing is kind of gaps in those students' knowledge. And so we are, we are trying to scoop them up right away and get them in interventions, because we know we only have them for a short period of time. In addition, just speaking to the area of reading, we have a higher number of students in our tier three intervention, because what we've noticed at this, as incoming sixth graders or even incoming seventh or eighth, if they're new to the district, if you can't read, you cannot read to learn. And so a lot of our tier three interventions are really focusing on phonics instruction still and trying to get those students up to a functional reading level. And so that is done in very small groups and sometimes even one on one. But that's why that number is higher than our tier two group of students. Our tier two does have some phonics instruction, but it's primarily vocabulary and comprehension based. And so when we really have to teach a student kind of to relearn how to read, that has to be done in really small groups. So that's kind of the reason for those numbers being a little different than they have been in years past. Did I properly answer your question about the percentages? Okay, just want to make sure.
Thank you.
So we do have a few new instructional technology tools that we'll be implementing this year. The first one is called Wayground, formerly called quizzes, if you're familiar with that. This tech tool is quite, it has a lot of features that are built into it. So it's not just quizzes, although assessments are a part of it. It also has interactive slideshows and video features that can be included, too. So it's really cool. We have our Spanish teacher, who is normally when she does her verbal or oral type assessments, she has to pull students out for that session to be done one on one. And it can be pretty time consuming when you have a class of 25 students or so. So one of the features that this tool has is actually an audio component where she can have the questions appear as slides and force the students to navigate and go through them at her pace. So she can ask a question out loud, and then the students will be able to record their answer in Spanish, and then should be able to move them on to the next question. So now, what would maybe take a week to be able to do, she'll be able to finish in a class period, which is really exciting. We also have our seventh grade science teacher, Natalie Keer, who uses videos regularly, kind of like a flipped classroom type model, for her students to go through their content. And one of the features that Wayground has, too, is that she can take the videos that she's recorded, embedded into Wayground, and have questions. So the students can watch the video. It'll progress for a certain amount of time, and then there will be a stopping point that she can implement. And it could just be a note to say, okay, take out your notes and make sure you're writing this down. Or it could be a comprehension question that they actually have to go through and answer in order to progress. We hosted already, myself and the new LRC director and technology coach at the high school, Nick Helms, we've already put together a professional development that staff were able to get some experience with Wayground. But we also have a training scheduled for them the first week of October on that October 3rd institute day. So everyone will be able to experience that. But it's nice to see that we've got some teachers who are already digging digging into this new tech tool, which is really exciting. I'm also thrilled that we just had a pilot just started today, actually, where we had representatives from School AI come and speak to us from all three buildings. And we were able to go through our training experience with them today. And School AI and Brisk two both have teacher facing and student facing AI components. What I'm most looking forward to is the chat feature that School AI and Brisk both have to offer. It's very secure and safe. That was something that was brought up several times. And with that safety, sorry, give me a second, give my train of thought back. So anything that would be inappropriate, or the students not using the tech tool accurately, the teacher would immediately get an alert. So it's nice that we have those safeguards in there. The teacher can also go through and review the conversations and the chats with the students. So it's nice that we have that safety element first. That's, of course, our top priority when we have our students working with AI. It also has some pre-trained models that come with it as well. So something like Gemini, we might need to start from scratch with that. But with tools like this, all of that prompting and training kind of is already built in, and then the teachers can just fine tune it, which is really cool. I've already had one of our teachers try this out in class, which is great. She was a little head of the game, but it was really cool to see, because the writing assignment that the kids needed to do was a narrative nonfiction. So they had to write about themselves in a specific experience where they encountered a challenge and how they overcame it. And inevitably, they all write about the transition from fifth grade to sixth grade and how hard it was to come through to the junior high, right, with all the changes. So our teacher, Mary Sauer, who teaches eighth grade, she's great, wanted to try this out. And so she used this chatbot and said she wanted the students to be able to brainstorm different ideas. And what's cool about these tools is that their default setting is just like this coach mode, where it's just going to allow the students to be able to share and just perpetually ask them questions to continue to probe their thinking. And what she was so excited about is that the variety of topics was way more expansive expanded than what she had encountered before. And all of the students were also to leave with their little like planning organizer, just their thoughts completed before the end of the class period, which is great. She said that's never really happened before. So it was cool to see the kids get pushed a bit more by the by the AI. I'm also really excited, too, because the teachers who are in this pilot include Jay Grau, who is our self-contained special education teacher. So we're really excited about the opportunities that this could create more equitable experiences for those students to be able to articulate themselves in a better way, leveraging technology like this. And also, our bilingual teacher, Tammy Salzba, is included in this, too. And I was already toying around with the School AI platform, and it was able to speak in both English and Spanish. So it was nice that we will be able to provide that support while also continuing to encourage English acquisition from our new students. So very excited about that.
Can I ask on that? I don't know if you incorporate that. Are we still using any of the the Google Gemini or Deffeter class companion from last year?
Yes. Yes. So we'll still be using those tech tools as well. And I, the School AI and Brisk do have some of the translating and text leveling components that Diffit has to offer. So it's going to be one of those things where we'll have to try it out to see if we would need a program like Diffit, if it's able to fulfill all of those needs. I will say Diffit also is able to create ancillary resource worksheets and extra activities that these programs don't offer at this time. But AI is evolving so quickly. It's just going so fast. So we really want to be thoughtful about which platform we go with, and we really want to commit to one. But it's just, even now, Google Classroom now has different AI components that are built in. It's just evolving so quickly. But yes, we'll still be leveraging those programs, too. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on. I'm clicking on both. It didn't work. We're moving on to assessment and results. Just again, another reminder, just a rundown of the types of assessments that we use and briefly what we use them for. You know, obviously, we'll talk more about I Ready. You know, we're using that for our growth monitoring for all of our students, fall, winter, and spring, along with the learning pathways, the individualized learning pathways that it provides for our students after each of those diagnostics. Again, still a big part of what we're doing on a weekly basis, having extended homeroom time every Wednesday that is dedicated to time spent on their learning pathways in reading and math. Fastbridge is a tool that we've used some in the past at the middle school, but it is still important to us as the elementary continues to use that as another one of their growth monitoring tools. And the data that we get from that can definitely definitely helps us with proper placement of students, especially within our interventions. Our curriculum assessments, again, this is just talking about the ones that are either developed by our teachers themselves or the ones that are part of our programs that we've used as we, you know, mentioned Open Si Ed for science, My Perspectives for ELA, and our Eureka Math Square for math. You know, again, the the information that we get from those and the the progress and performance of our students throughout the school year on those summative assessments, you know, it's definitely important data for us to continue to, you know, monitor the progress of our students throughout the year. We all know IR for the and ISA for our state testing, we'll get into those results. And then just a reminder that, again, last fall was the first time giving the pre ACT eight nine. And we will share some about those results and try to answer some of the questions that you had along with that when we get to there, I get to that portion. We did not try to make any kind of parallels or connections to the PSAT eight nine results. College Board and ACT are quite different with the way they, you know, display their results, with the way they set their college readiness benchmarks. It just was, I think, easier to just say we're starting fresh with pre ACT and we'll and we'll be able to compare from there in the future. So moving on to I Ready, you know, one of the big measures for us each year is to see what our growth looks like from fall to spring on I Ready. And we have that mid-year check at winter to see what kind of progress we're making. But but then, you know, the the big thing is, you know, we talk about this in education that, you know, it doesn't matter as much when you learn it, but if you learn it, and some students will, you know, get, you know, be able to gain that learning faster than others and be able to demonstrate that they've already, you know, possibly met that typical growth by by mid-year. But the goal is that they are able to achieve that by the spring. And, you know, we're happy to say that there was significant growth for both math and reading. Both were at 63% of our students meeting that what I already calls typical growth, but we refer into that as expected growth. That's what, on average, you would want to see from the students based on the data. That is an increase from the previous year. Reading was at 60% growth in the 2324 school year, or 60% meeting that growth target. And only 51% actually in 2324 for math. So a nice, significant increase there from 51% the year before to 63% of our students meeting that growth target last school year. We don't need to pull them up right now, but if you've looked at slides 40 and 41 at the end of the presentation, that gives a little bit more detail showing those five placement levels from, you know, three or more grade levels below all the way up to mid or above the grade level with the green to red. And again, we're seeing what we want to see. If you look at the comparison from the fall graph to the spring graph, all the shifts are positive. And what we would, you know, want to be seeing in terms of the darker green expanding, the darker red shrinking, and obviously, there's going to be some shifting in between there that takes place. But, you know, the results are clear for us to know that, you know, we're doing what we want to do. We're seeing the growth from fall to spring. And I ready is a great tool to show us that. It still can be a little tricky to say for sure where that point is where, you know, we can, you know, say without a doubt, they're going to meet or exceed on IAR based on I Ready. But one thing that is pretty much certain is that if we can get them to that mid or grade, mid or above grade level, so that like that darker green by the spring, it's almost a guarantee that they're going to meet or exceed. Not that might not be a realistic target for all students. But if they're starting the year, we'll say in the green or close to it, meaning they're early on grade level or maybe just slightly behind that, you know, a good portion of our students have that potential to get to that point by the spring. So this next graph is what Ms. Nora was referring to earlier. So this is what they call the beginning of the year view in I Ready. And it lays out the three tiers. In an ideal world, we would like to see 80% in the green for tier one, probably about 10, 15% in tier two in the yellow, and 5-ish percent in the red. Is that accurate? Okay, making sure we're on the same page. So this is where we're close to it, as Ms. Nora mentioned, 75% in the green for reading and 78% in the green for math. So approaching that 8% mark that we would like to see. And really, what that's saying is these students are ready for grade level content. Their overall, you know, on that, again, going back to that five level placement, they might be in the yellow, saying they're one year behind. But but they're close enough to where in this, in the beginning of the year, they're included in the green because we're saying they're ready for grade level content. Those gaps that are there can be filled within the general classroom in a tier one setting. We would like to see that, again, as Ms. Nora pointed out, the the reverse there with the flip of the yellow and red, where it would be, you know, more like two thirds yellow and one third red. But for various factors that Ms. Nora also mentioned, you know, we do see that larger population in in the three or more grade levels behind that we are looking to address with those tier three interventions.
Quick question. So you're starting the year off with almost just under 80 for both numbers.
Mm hmm.
So that's roughly, if I had to guess, had math. So you're looking at about 15 students that you need to get into, you know, to increase that to 80%, right? Roughly about 100% students, under 20. So I'm gonna guess 15 students. So do you have a plan to kind of, you know, keep the keep the 78% or 75%? Find those 15 students and get them into that 80%?
Yes. So I mean, the first step in that is specifically for our math teachers and our ELA teachers, sharing with them the beginning of the year I Ready reports, where, yes, they can get the data on all their students, but really targeting in what we call like those bubble students that are not just in the yellow, which is the one you're behind, but towards the high end of that yellow, where, you know, again, like you're saying, that 10 to 15 students that with just a little bit of a push can maintain that momentum and get to the point that we want them to be in the spring. So along with just knowing who those students is, which is, you know, very helpful for the teachers to know which students we're talking about. Also, we look at trends in their areas of weakness. So there are subcategories that are provided to us. And it's usually pretty consistent where those weaknesses are. But we can look at those specific students and analyze that with our departments, you know. So I go every two weeks, I'm in a department meeting with each of our departments, and we can look at that together. Or even if, you know, if teachers choose to sit down in, you know, individually with me, and we can go through it together to see what we want to target for for those areas for growth to get us, to keep us on track towards that goal, like you're saying.
Great. Thank you.
All right. So getting into our IAR results. So this past spring, well, let's start with this. Over the summer, ISBE had a committee that was working on updating the cut scores for what would be that, you know, that proficient mark. And now, a lot of work went into that. I'm not sure how much that's been discussed with the board, but just to try to summarize it quickly, the goal was, well, first, the observation was made that Illinois, with their state testing, had, first of all, one of the most rigorous state tests. And secondly, one of the most, one of the highest expectations when it comes to what proficient, what proficient meant, what it took to get to that proficient mark. It didn't necessarily line up with the success that students went on to demonstrate as they went through high school and then even onto into college. Definitely was quite a bit off from what was considered college ready based on SAT or ACT. So the work of the committee was to really try to get these cut scores more to a point that was a more true descriptor, depiction of where those students are headed and what their chances are for success in the future. So if you look at this, for example, 78% of our students did meet for ELA this year, when you look at the total school population. But what we put there with the dotted line is showing that even if they hadn't changed the cut score, we still would have gone up a couple percents to 71%. So even if that, even after that huge 25% jump we made with the implementation of My Perspectives and a lot of dedicated work on essays for the written portions of IAR, even after that jump, still the next year, we would have gone up more. But, you know, again, I think there were some questions about, you know, But, you know, again, and I think there were some questions about, you know, how does this compare to those districts around us? This is still considered preliminary data until the, the report cards are official. So, you know, once we have that, which usually goes public end of October, I believe, you know, then we would be able to, you know, share some of those comparisons. But, you know, we are definitely pleased specifically with ELA to see, like I said, that even in that next year of implementation with My Perspectives, that we were, you know, maintained momentum and continued to grow even after that big jump.
A real quick, so the four, in the prior years, the forty-four percent and sixty-nine, those are on the old standards?
Those are on the old cut score, yes, correct.
So in two years, you've gone from forty-four to, we'll say seventy-one using the same cut standards, which is like a huge increase. So thank you. That's amazing.
No, and thank you for the opportunity to be able to, you know, switch to a new curriculum. I know, I mean, budget's always an issue and things like that, but it has definitely been worth it when it comes to the success for our students. And again, we had to have a shout out to Dr. Slowiak and, and really our ELA teachers, social studies teachers and science teachers, and math to a certain extent. Writing is not a huge part of that, but we did some work on that too. But just that focus on our students' writing and really getting them to, to know what's expected of them and be able to demonstrate it effectively.
And so just to make sure I understood, the selection of the curriculum has been one of the factors that has, of course, all the hard work in, in your building to, to make that curriculum successful. But that's aligned to I Ready and IAR, so which is what you'd contribute that part of the twenty-seven percent increase in, in two years.
I definitely would.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone wants to speak to that more.
I would definitely say yes. It's allowed our teachers to teach, which is what they do best. So they don't have to write the assessments as much and they do not have to create the curriculum that the curriculum's provided for them. And they do, again, what I said at the beginning, while I'm so proud of them, they love our kids, they teach our kids, they, they support our kids in every need and that's what.
And this is year three of that curriculum?
It is, yes. Year three of that.
It's incredible for two years of, of a new curriculum and kudos to your entire building. Cause first year everyone's learning and second year, you know, they're getting better using the same jokes from the prior year. They're refining it, right? And then third, but have that two-year acceleration, I can't say enough. Thank you.
And then just reiterating what, what Mr. Carney said. You know, obviously at the middle school level, our students are content area specialists as well. So, but again, just having that burden of, of creating all of that when it comes with curriculum assessments and just being able to use their knowledge and skills to, you know, possibly modify, you know, make it more their own when they feel the need to, but, but to already have all of that in place and know that if they use the units and cover the units, then they're addressing all the grade level standards. And that's, it's huge to know that that's already done for them. All right. So moving on to, well, looking at the grade levels broken down, just a quick look at that. And if you have questions, let me know. But when we look at the grade levels, again, it changes somewhat from one to the next. You know, we do sometimes see a drop off from fifth to sixth. But in this case, you know, looking at our current seventh graders, taking the test last year as sixth graders, there was just a one percent drop if you went by the old cut scores. But they did end up, again, with the new cut scores, reaching eighty percent meeting or exceeding. For our current eighth graders, so when they took it as seventh graders, there was a slight dip. They made huge gains as, as sixth graders to have seventy-three percent meeting or exceeding. And they still came close to maintaining that with the old cut score. But again, it was bumped up by the new cut score there. And then our current ninth graders, you know, we, we talked about them a lot and when we, especially when we had our follow-up meeting in last January. And again, they just continued to show us what they were capable of and, and really demonstrated that they, they were serious about their learning last year and made another huge jump. I mean, so look at them, again, just going by the old cut scores, they go from forty-one percent as sixth graders to fifty-seven to seventy-one. And then on top of that with the new cut score. But again, just very proud of that group and the work that they put into, to their education last year. So looking at math, some of the same, some of the same things going on there. Now, we didn't see a twenty-five percent jump like we did with the, with the ELA. But looking back even to, you know, before IAR was IAR, when it was Park, and I'm going years, years back. I don't know, at least in the years that I've been here, that we've even been at that, what the old cut score would show forty-eight percent achievement. The, you know, the math test is, is definitely different and those achievement levels, you know, you can't compare them to ELA in terms of what those percentages look like. It's just, you know, measured differently. But to see, like we had talked about last year, that we had sort of leveled off with what we felt like we were getting out of the Eureka Math program, wanting to move to the Eureka Math Squared. And then also putting an added emphasis on the, the written responses that the students have even on math for IAR, where they're explaining their reasoning, you know, explaining the steps of their problem solving, doing some real targeted work with that last spring. We sort of, we shifted from our big I Ready Set Go approach from the last couple of years and focused more in, and we still use I Ready, but we used the mastery checks that, that I Ready has that, that are aligned to the state standards, but also are purposely written to be like IAR test prompts. And we use that instead of, instead of really targeting, you know, let's get five thousand plus I Ready lessons done in these next ten weeks. We really focus more in on, let's do some targeted practice on what this is going to look like on the IAR. And specifically in math, I think we, you know, definitely saw benefits, benefits of that. So we're happy about that four percent increase that we made even with the old cut score. And we're confident that, you know, that's going to, we're going to continue to see that growth even more. You know, Eureka Math Squared is just a, a better version of the older one. And not, you know, so it wasn't like we reinvented everything. But even with that, you know, that we've seen the improvement that we did again, and knowing that we're going to continue to focus on those same, same points that we feel we're going to be able to grow, grow at. I, I think we'll continue to see a positive increase there. Looking at the grade levels for that, again, it can vary from one, one grade to the next, but we see, you know, at times that drop from fifth to sixth, especially with last year's, or our current seventh graders, last year's sixth graders. The new cut scores, I know, can, can make it a little complicated and deceiving, but that's why we wanted to include those dotted lines there to, to say that, or to show that, you know, for our current eighth graders, they were, you know, showing a little bit of incremental growth there last year. And again, another point of pride with last, last year's eighth graders, our current ninth graders, making a huge jump from thirty-seven percent up to forty-nine percent. A, a point to make on the math cut scores, the new ones, it's different than ELA in the sense that they actually have different cut scores at each grade. So the new cut score gets closer and closer to the old cut score as they get older, if that makes sense. So we didn't see a huge change there, you know, just forty-nine to fifty-one, because I think in the end, you know, I believe seven, I want to say seven fifty was the old cut score. And then, you know, for eighth grade, it now is seven forty-five. So on the scale that they use for testing, that's not, not a huge difference. So we gained a few students and increased the percent there. But again, they, they chose to take a different approach on the math side where incremental, they just raised that cut score incrementally, you know, with the, with the, with the new approach that they're taking. So, but again, overall, I'm still, you know, very, very pleased with the results that we're seeing on the math. For science, science, actually, the state just determined with their committee work that the cut score was too low. So we would have maintained that seventy-eight percent of students meeting or exceeding. But because they determined that the cut score is too low and, and, you know, so raised that, it did lower our percent to sixty-seven. But again, knowing that we were maintaining and, you know, already almost at that eighty percent meeting mark, you know, we, you know, obviously we'll look at the results and see where we can, where we can continue to grow in science as well. But we feel pretty confident that, you know, as the results come out statewide, that sixty-seven percent is, is still going to be, you know, a relatively strong performance for our, for our eighth graders last year. And then finally, the pre ACT eight nine. So there were some questions about, you know, where's the average composite score? And I think also asking about the reading score. Now, when the results were given to us, and again, I, we can go back and dig in further for this. We, we did not see a separate reading score. We just were given what you see here with the, the math performance, English performance, science and STEM. We can look into it and, and see if there are some specific reading scores that we could share as well. We did calculate the average composite score. They do provide composite scores. That did come out to seventeen point eight. And now this is on a thirty-point scale, so it's different than the full thirty-six when they take the ACT as a junior in high school. But even looking for a national average composite for pre ACT eight nine, ACT does not provide that. And basically they said that, you know, it's, there's too much variation because the students are taking it, it could be taken at the beginning of eighth grade or they could be taken at the end of ninth grade. That's all the pre ACT eight nine. So they don't even provide an average composite score for that. And they say instead to focus more on what we provide here with the, meeting the readiness benchmarks. So again, this is baseline data for us really. We'll, you know, be able to compare from here in the future, you know, how this, you know, how these, you know, the percent on target versus the close, percent close to target and how those numbers will change over the years. But one part of this that actually was very beneficial to us was the percent in need of intervention. It provided us with a great opportunity, especially with our reading and math interventions that we have in the building to, to see, you know, the students that were designated as in need of intervention. Do we have them already in some form of, of intervention in those areas? And we were pleased to see that, you know, we had properly been able, had already been able to identify those students and it matched up with what we were already doing. So I think that'll continue to be a worthwhile tool. But again, overall, I think, you know, we're going to have to take this for two or three years to really see, you know, what our trends are and how we're performing.
You know, I, I just wondered on that question, Paulo, you had the question about reading. Are, are you familiar, I mean, do?
I was curious because when I, my understanding of the STEM score is that, because if you look at the percentage of on-target in STEM, it's significantly lower. And my assumption that I wanted to have clarified is that the reading score impacted that STEM score. And so that's what I was curious about.
Yeah, no, thank you for bringing that up. So we were definitely confused at first too, you know, if they're doing so well, for example, in math and science, why is, you know, why is STEM so low? So what we found in that, and again, I still will dig into it further to see if we can find the reading. But the explanation, so, and maybe I should have started with this actually. The, the definition of percent on-target for ACT is saying you're on-target for earning a C or better in a freshman-level course in that content area in college. So for, as a freshman in college, you know, seventy-four percent of our students are on-target to be able to earn a C or better in their freshman-level math course in college. For STEM though, they are considering that not just STEM-related courses, but students that would choose to major in a STEM field. So you're engineering students, so math, you know, someone majoring in math or majoring in physics, for example. Those students, their freshman-level courses are, because of the path that they're on, more challenging. So this would be more like saying forty-one percent of our students, if they were to choose a career in STEM, are on-track to earn a C or better in, we'll say like a calc one or a physics one as a freshman in college, taking that, that, it's a freshman course, but it's, it's, you know, those higher-level courses that are on a path towards a degree in a STEM field. Hopefully that made sense.
I, I tried to use Vinnie's AI tools and it said that pre ACT was just these four subjects. So I don't think reading's included in that.
Thank you for your help with that. I appreciate you. Yeah, thank you.
All right. As I go through the five essential survey, at least that's in our presentation here, I would like to encourage you to go through our entire report when you have a chance. I'm very proud. I take a lot of time over the summer, reflection, looking through the results. It's very important to me to get the parent feedback and student feedback and staff feedback and kind of see where we can improve. So the ones that we just chose for this presentation really, I feel like, really show what the work that we did last year and the results that we've, we've seen the increase in this year. So as we go through here, Academic Press and Course Clarity are both tied and related to, again, the new curriculums that we've incorporated and just the, I'm under Academic Press, just about the teachers expect students to do their best. A lot of the questions are all related to that. Teacher expects everyone to work hard. Class really makes me think. Class challenges me. Teacher asks difficult questions. They become better thinkers, not just memorize things. So it's all based on, again, the rigor that we've taken on with these new courses and our new, new curriculums. Same with Course Clarity. There are clear learning goals, you know, support achievement. You saw those numbers jump from fifty-one, now they're up to sixty-one for Academic Press, which is in the strong category. Course Clarity had a huge jump from fifty-four to seventy-two, which again, very proud of and all the work that our teachers have done. And again, Vinnie and Tor and Lindsay and all the work, everybody did, especially the students. Supportive environment, again, these are all the student surveys, so this is all coming from the students. I forgot to mention that. But we worked a lot in our SCL units about relationships and treating each other with respect and all the things I mentioned too with our pride initiative. And this is one of the things that we, we've consistently been pretty strong, but seventy-four is a really high number. So this is just that students treat each other with respect. They work well in class together. They support each other in their learning, which again, at the middle school level, it's not as easy as it seems to get. And we do a really good job of that. So I'm proud of everybody for that. So we went from sixty-seven to seventy-four. And then as you mentioned, our prison, or if you remember from our presentation last year, safety was a big issue, specifically in the hallways and the bathrooms. So we did really focus on that. And as you can see, the results, we went from forty-eight, which is more of low-neutral, all the way up to sixty-three, which is now strong. And then the connection safety survey we just did this fall is giving us the same results. So I'm feeling really good about that. The nice thing we did about the survey this fall is we, we specifically had the students that did feel any safety needs or did see something that might not be safe, identify where that was happening. So like auditorium foyer was located, one of the areas that sometimes students misbehave. So it gives us an, an idea of where we want to make sure that we're monitoring to make sure that we know. But seeing great, great improvements with that. Very proud. Based on the staff survey, I'll always have school commitment in here because it's important. It's really that teacher, teachers are just committed to the school. The one thing I always like to say, it's one of those questions is, would you send your own kids to, to Lisle? And why wouldn't you, right? We're a great place, great district. But again, it just means a lot to me that this, this teachers are committed to, to everything that we do and obviously the students, most importantly. So that number went from sixty-eight all the way up to seventy-four. Class disruptions, again, goes back to our SCL, what I mentioned before. Based on the teachers' input, it went from seventy-two to seventy-eight. So that students are, are, you know, doing their expectations in class. Teacher-parent trust, this is a big focus last year was, and continuing this year is bringing parents into our building, volunteering, being part of us trying to build that partnership. And it shows here, went from sixty-two to seventy-four, or sorry, from, yes, sixty-two to seventy-four. And the same thing with involvement, when, when parents are in, gives us more chance to have communication and, and the communication with the tools that we've used between Parent Square and again, having parents in our building and just having more parents involved with HSO and everything else that we do, has jumped all the way up to seventy-eight. And then program coherence, which again, goes back to the curriculum, went from sixty-one all the way up to eighty-one, which is in the very strong category. So feeling really good about that. The parent survey came back. Our numbers are pretty much identical in a lot of the areas. So the school outreach, make you aware of important news, sixty-eight, or ninety-six percent often, or every time there's an event. So that's, again, a lot of the work that Jenna helped us with, with our weekly communication and things that we do has really made a difference. Parents assessment of teacher trust, the teachers do the best to help to learn. That's what our, our parents know. Ninety-seven percent feel that our teachers are doing the best to support our kids. And then assessment of teacher trust, discomfort, comfortable, sharing concerns with teachers, eighty-nine percent strongly agree. So that's the same number we had last year. So we've consistently been keeping that, which I'm very proud of. And of course, as you go through things, you always look at things to improve on. So top one effective leaders, sixty is the, the magic number to being strong. So we're right there. We've been there the last two years. Looking deeper into the data and the questions and what feedback we are receiving, and that's coming from teachers. The one category that wasn't as strong is, it says principal, so I'll take, I'll take ownership of it. Does not go into the classes as often as they should to know what's going on in classes. Looking at that, seventy-five percent of our teachers say that we do, so it's twenty-five percent. So as I was percent. So as I was reflecting on that over the summer, and I'm thinking back and in my notes and different things like that, I consistently go to the same classes quite often. A lot of times it's ELA and, and math, because that's our focus. So I'm, doesn't obviously everything is not identified, who's, who's putting what result or what answers on, but I'm guessing it's probably some of the other schools. So that's one of my focuses this year, and I think it'll be all our focuses is being in all our classrooms and not just getting the ELA in math. Collaborative practices, and went from forty-seven to fifty-five, so slight increase. The one thing that teachers put on there, we do a really good job working together, we have a lot of collaboration time, but the one thing that was marked down is teachers don't have the opportunity to visit other classrooms, to observe other teachers. They don't take, have much time with it. And I'm going to be pretty honest with that. When we lost our permanent sub after COVID, our teachers are asked to internally sub pretty much every day. So on top of their five classes, they lose a planning period a lot of the times because they're subbing for another teacher who's not there. So it's hard for me to ask them to give up more time to do that, even though it is very important. So it'll be something that we do focus on. Hopefully we can get some more subs in the building, so we're not using internal subs as much, but that is one of the aspects. And then English instruction and the math instruction, again, we talk all this about how rigorous it is, and then we see these results and it's kind of like, oh my gosh, like where, where's this coming from? And looking at, again, breaking it down, it's, it's pretty interesting to think. Classroom rigor, which is another category in this that I don't have listed here, went from fifty-eight last year to seventy-three strong this year. So again, that's related to the curriculum. Program coherence went from sixty-one last year all the way up to eighty-one, which is very strong this year. And then I already mentioned the academic press that went from fifty-one to sixty-one. So looking at all these, I'm like, this doesn't make sense that these would be lower. So as we kept looking into it a little bit more and more, math was kind of an easy one. There's all the different questions that they have for math. And one that we just scored, what's the word I want, very poorly on, was having students write their own math questions. So that, I guess, must not be part of the curriculum as much, but things that we can do as an additional aspect, but it was eighty percent of our students said that they did not do that at least more than two times a semester. So again, we're going to kind of work on that. So that's kind of, but the rest of them, we were pretty high on. So I think if we can change that number, we're going to be okay. And then also with English, we have, the lowest one was, where am I at here? Which was pretty, like, one of the things, rewrite a paper or essay in response to comments, which they do all the time, but only seventy percent said that they do that multiple times a month. But the biggest one is debating the meaning of a reading, which again, we visit the classrooms quite often when it comes to the ELA, and they do that on a daily basis. So we think it's just a vocabulary word of debate. I think that, if that's a discussion, I think that they would probably answer this question differently. So I think we're going to teach them the vocabulary, what it means for this question, because again, they don't, they might be thinking of it as a formal debate or an argument or, or whatever, but not just a discussion of the meaning of a reading, because they do that all the time. Because only sixty-seven percent of our kids said they do that multiple times a month. And again, we know we, they do it on a daily basis, so. We're going to kind of continue to work on that. Hopefully those numbers will change. But again, we're very proud of all the results.
That's a new chart this year too, from last year. So thank you for including that on the opportunities though.
Getting into the action plan portion here, you know, every August, you know, our areas of focus for each building and for the district are shared with the board. And this allows us to expand on that a little bit for what we're going to be doing in these areas. So starting with curriculum, with this being year two of our Eureka Math Squared implementation, we want to continue to focus on, as it says here, addressing as many grade level standards as possible. We did have quite a bit of success with that last year. Like I mentioned earlier, there's six units or modules is what they refer to them as per grade level. Two of our three grade levels were able to get through five full units and sort of do a mini unit, we'll say, with that final one. The other grade level was able to cover four of the, four of the six, but also able to highlight the main points from, from the two that they didn't get to, which again, I don't want to make it sound like they're not as important, but in this case, like, it was percents and probabilities that they didn't get to, which they were still able to highlight the, the key points of those concepts and skills before IAR, so that the students were prepared for questions that would be along those lines, they just weren't able to get to the full units on those. So we'll continue to, you know, work on further implementation, you know, and getting through, you know, eventually as we are more and more used to it, hopefully all six units per grade level. Similarly, we talked about my perspective of implementation, wanting to be able to look for creative ways to include my perspectives, for example, in the literature classroom, having those two ELA periods each day, you know, we can really be creative with maximizing that time and ensuring that our students are, if not getting to every single unit, again, being able to get to the majority of those. And, and again, at least if nothing else, hit the standards that are covered in those units, even if they aren't able to cover them completely. But confident that as we continue to be, you know, as like I said earlier, as the students and teachers are more comfortable and familiar with the program, even with the students coming to us from the elementary version with, you know, with my view, you know, we, we're confident that we're going to be able to continue to progress on that as well. For assessment, our areas of focus for that, we are continuing to push our reassessment opportunities. You know, we feel strongly that that's an important part of learning, especially on our summative assessments or tasks when students are not able to demonstrate that learning the first time. We were able to successfully implement a after-school teaching, sorry, after-school testing center last year that meets, or that's available once a week. And we saw some good benefits from that, teachers taking advantage of it, students taking advantage of it. And it's not just for reassessing or making up missed tests, but even along with our STAR program, which offers after-school tutoring on three days a week, this was a, a place where students could do some of those relearning experiences as well. So we want to, you know, continue to push hard on that and make sure our teachers are promoting it. And then we'll do our part to make sure the students don't get on the bus when they need to go to the testing center on Wednesdays. The professional development portion of this, you know, we're looking at different ways that we can, you know, continue to meet the diverse needs of all of our students. Last year, with bringing on the bilingual program in our building, we used one of our professional learning days to have a, a session on how to better meet the needs of our EL student population. Dr. Slowak, along with Ms. Ying and Ms. Saltzba, did a great job of going through the meaning of access scores and being able to utilize those results to know where the students are at and how they can help them, you know, move from, we'll say, point A to point B, just to, you know, continue to help them progress in their abilities. And we're going to look to have sort of a round two of that coming up later on this year, this, really this fall still, so that our students, our teachers can continue to, you know, look for ways to be able to meet those needs and even integrate some of the instructional technology tools and AI tools that, that Dr. Slowak's been working with the, the teachers on. Along with that, we're always looking for ways to better utilize the iReady results. You know, we mentioned a little bit of that by being able to, you know, find those bubbles, students, for example. iReady also provides instructional groupings based on what the levels the students are at. So each teacher can go into iReady and, and see for all their classes, you know, what the recommended instructional groupings would be so that you can, you know, do some more, you know, whether it be station work, where the higher-end kids can sort of be more self-guided, and then the lower-end students can have more teacher-focused attention. It, it breaks them all down into those levels for you. And so again, just wanted to be able to better utilize all of our assessment results to help our teachers, which will then help our students. And then finally, we began at the end of last school year, continued through the summer a bit, and then also this fall, we started a grading committee, six-twelve. Eric Martzoff got the ball rolling on that and asked Mr. Carney if he wanted to, you know, if we wanted to come along and be a part of that, and we definitely do, we want to have that kind of, you know, cohesiveness with what a grade means, what should go into a grade, what should reassessment look like. These are all things that we're investigating within the committee first, and then those committee members represent all of the different departments. So then when we have professional learning time on half-days or full institute days, we're able to dedicate some time to those six-twelve department meetings, where they can dig into what the grading committee has been doing and share what we've talked about in those committee meetings, but also then gather feedback for, you know, what everyone, how everyone's feeling about that. Are we, are we, you know, moving towards a shared agreement or understanding of where we want to go, you know, in the future and what this might look like? So it's, it's pretty open-ended, but there's a lot of good work and good conversations taking place. And again, in the end, I think, you know, stronger grading practices where, you know, the grade is really communicating what we feel it should communicate and the things that are going into that grade really are more focused on student learning and their demonstration of what they've learned. In the end, it's going to be better for, for everyone, but especially for the students' learning for that grade to really reflect, you know, how they're doing based on the grade level or the course standards. So, you know, we'll be more, I'm sure more to come on that. Any questions on curriculum instruction before we move to the next portion?
No, it's exciting to hear about grading because it's probably been a decade and maybe three principals ago at the high school that we, you know, changes are made to that, so.
Right, yeah, no, I think you're right. It's been about, about ten years when we made that shift to everyone going what we called like the eighty-twenty, with the eighty percent of the grade being summative and twenty percent being formative. But as you can imagine, over ten years and from one, you know, school to the other, from one course to the next, one teacher to the next, a lot of variation might take place over those ten years. So it's good for us to sort of, you know, reconvene on all that and get back on the same page and see where we can make improvements.
Is it, is it deliverable? Will you have like a written, I don't call it policy, but practice?
I will say that in the end, it probably will lead to some of those things, but we're still sort of in the early stages and wanting, wanting all teachers' voices to be heard and, and making sure that, yeah, I would say probably there'd be some piloting of some new ideas before anything would become, you know, something that, you know, more across the board.
Okay. I'm not sure the rest of the board would.
Yeah, it took a couple of years last time, so I mean, it's not a quick fix.
I figure it's not quick, it's going to take a couple of years.
We'll see how it evolves.
But if we can keep us, I guess, at this point annually updated, if the rest of the board is also open to that, that'd be fantastic.
Definitely.
Thank you.
So when it comes to instruction, one of the areas of focus is kind of expanding out, going beyond our ELA, social studies and science. And like Mr. Erickson alluded to, I've got my sights set on math next. I know that might sound a little bit weird, but having the students go through and explain their thinking of their math problems is definitely on my radar, and I was really excited. Meredith McCormick from LES actually had reached out. So this past summer, I was able to collaborate with her and a group of teachers from LES just about strategies and acronyms that we could build out the, how, set the foundation for how students can write about their, their math problems and their, their, write about their thinking. So I'm really excited to take that to our junior high staff to kind of be able to see how we can scaffold this up to make it more middle school appropriate, but for us to have a consistent framework on how our students can tackle writing and math is, is very exciting as well. Of course, like I had mentioned before, we've got our digital instructional tools that we're going to be looking at, especially AI in the form of Brisk and School AI, kind of our area of focus with that, and how we can best leverage that, of course, with our learning targets in mind first, pedagogy comes first, and then we add technology as needed. So we'll be investigating which tool is going to be the best fit. And like Mr. Erickson has already discussed, leveraging iReady to use that information to help inform our teachers about where our students are at. And one of the other things that we did last year that we didn't really touch on yet is that we were able to provide some individualized reports for students based on their iReady scores, and we really felt like that went a long way. And we weren't using just the default settings that iReady had, we really tailored it and personalized it towards the needs of our students to allow them that time to look at their score, to be able to see, okay, well, in order for you to meet your typical goal, growth, to meet your stretch growth, this is actually where you need to be. And I don't know if they had ever seen that before, to be honest. So it was really, it made the experience a lot more meaningful for the students after their testing they were talking about in the hallways on their break, like, oh, what 'd you get? Or like, oh, I didn't meet my growth, or I did, and I'm really excited, you know, like, they were more, taking it more seriously. So I think that kind of encouraged them to, that it's not just some flippant thing, like, take it seriously, we're looking at it, we want you to do well, and we really want you to do your best. And it really felt like they were able to take it more seriously this time, which was...
I just want to throw in there, Vinnie used the word "we," but Vinnie is the one who did all the work, and he individually made each report for all three hundred and thirty students, so.
And it was good. And it was so sweet, because the kids were, I did, I did. It was, I have a new office now, so it's great, so I have room for all the papers. But, yeah, before there were papers everywhere. But it was so nice, it was really like, I loved being able to go through and see the kids, and they were setting their goals and they were coming up with an action plan, and they were really taking it seriously. And it really, I don't know, it, it was nice to have that much meaning come behind it. So that was really exciting. So, yeah, overall, I feel like with the, the technology and our pedagogy and our framework and just showing that individualized attention, we're a small school, right? So this, let's leverage that, that's, let's use that to our advantage. So, yeah, looking forward to all that good stuff.
Not as exciting, but just as important, the communication, and that's again, utilizing the, the resources that we do have, Parent Square, between our weekly newsletter and any other type of things we have to send out to parents. The teachers, we really are pushing for, to reach out to parents in advance of assessments or reassessment opportunities and different things, when grade books are updated, just again, having that communication so parents have that connection and know where their students are at and reach out if they need any help. And then our HSO's been outstanding, I mean, they've always been very supportive, but we have a tremendous group that's really, wants to do whatever they can to support us, and it's just been a great partnership the last few years and continuing to build on that this year, again, with having parents volunteer within the school day, but also just in general to support our kids and give them some outreach opportunities that we would not be able to provide without them, so continuing that partnership.
And then our last area of focus is social emotional learning. So as we talked about utilizing those pride points, one of the things that we are doing again this year is just expanding some of our reward offerings based on student feedback. So we've always had some of the consumable items, I will say, so snacks. But also, we've tried to increase our student experiences. So we've always had like lunch with our therapy dog or gym time with Mr. Carney, which is a huge, a huge prize that the kids like on Friday mornings. But just having the teachers think outside the box. Ms. Byrne has done, like, over the holidays, she'll do boo milk, which is basically you take marshmallow fluff on the inside of your cup and then you fill it with chocolate milk, and it looks like ghosts inside your milk, little things like that that the kids just love. So we're continuing to expand those. This year, the kids can cricket their own drawstring bags to like bring to a sport or something like that. So just things that they can spend their points on. And then we're continuing to focus on executive functioning and really trying to embed that executive functioning prac, skill practice into the classrooms and not just have it be something that they learn about in their homeroom classes. And so I know Mr. Carney focused on what Monica Blatchley is doing in the eighth grade with her binder system. But at each grade level, we're kind of scaffolding, at the sixth grade level, we're really helping the students to try to understand Google Classroom, because often their assignments are done and they just haven't clicked the submit button, or they're having trouble finding an assignment. And so there are different needs at each grade level and just really focusing on how to build those skills. And then again, as we talked about with our student services department, just developing partnerships with our local mental health agencies, and then really helping our teachers to understand what they can do to support our students. And so this year, and during a lot of our school improvement and professional development days, we have created individual professional learning cohorts, and we've called it Choose Your Own Adventure. And so we have brainstormed a couple of different categories of professional development, and teachers are able to choose what they want to focus on for the year, and we will have guidance for them, but it's really going to be, you know, what can we learn more about this topic and how can we implement our knowledge of this topic into our classrooms? And so three of the professional learning cohort kind of umbrellas that we're going to offer this year is just executive functioning in general, what tools are out there, what can we implement in our classroom? there? What can we implement in our classrooms? Um, SEL in general and trauma informed learning. There was one that people want to learn more about too, that kind of goes under SEL, which is the adolescent brain. How is the adolescent brain work? How can we leverage what students know and, um, are comfortable with and gravitate towards into our classrooms? And so, um, really, I think that's going to be helpful for our teachers to really be invested in, in trying to gain that knowledge and implement it in their classrooms.
All right. Well, thank you again. I'm sure there'll be questions.
One question. I'm sorry. Where do you feel you're at, at, in your journey towards being an exemplary rating? Cause your math, like, like ELA, they're looking great. A lot of the other things are looking great. Math, we have the new curriculum. Just wondering where you're feeling your head, like trending there?
I will let Tor, Mr. Mathematician over there, he's actually has it all calculated and.
I was expecting, yeah, I was expecting that to come up at the end here. Um, yeah. So, um, again, thank you for providing the questions ahead of time so we can dig in a little deeper. Um, and as you all know, the, the formula that's used for that can seem a little, I bumped it. It can, it can seem a little complicated. Um, so just a quick breakdown of that, of what goes into it and not, not the exact percentages, but where we are at in terms of maximizing each of those categories. Um, so based on our 2024 school report card, um, we have 100% of the available percentage, we'll say, uh, for ELA proficiency, uh, for math proficiency, for science proficiency, for climate survey. Um, we're nearing 100%. We're, um, with the ELA growth, we are 92% of the available percentage for the ELA growth. Uh, and those growth ones are the biggest ones. Um, 25 to 26%, I think, uh, of the overall, uh, is just on that, those growth measures, um, each one. So combined, they're like half of them, half of the designation is based on those growth. Um, so the math growth, um, the math growth measure, we were at 55% of the available, available percentage. So there's quite a bit of room for, um, growth on that component. Um, you know, we're confident that that is going to improve based on the, you know, the, the, um, growth that we saw just on the IR alone. Uh, we're not sure how much that's going to impact it, but you know, it'll, it'll definitely close that gap in that component of our overall, um, rating. Uh, the other one, uh, that is not at 100%. Um, we, we have 62% of the available percentage on chronic absenteeism. And again, just to clarify that, to make sure we're all on the same page with what that is telling us, um, a student is considered, considered chronic, a chronic absentee if they are absent for any reason, um, for 10% or more of the school year. So it could be that they went on a long vacation, but it also could be that they had a, a medical emergency that had them out of school for a couple of weeks, you know, whatever the case might be. Um, so 10% of the year is roughly, um, 17 and a half, we'll just call it 18 days. So if they missed 18 days or more for any reason at all, um, they are considered part of that percentage. Um, and we did see a, an improvement last year. Uh, so the 2024 school report card would have been based on the 23, 24 school year. Um, for our average daily attendance rate, um, it might seem like a slight improvement, but again, every little bit counts. Um, in 23, 24, we had a 93.3% attendance rate. Um, for last school year, 24, 25, we were, we were up to 94.0. Um, so again, not quite a percentage increase there for our average daily attendance rate. Um, and then for the chronic absenteeism rate in 23, 24, uh, we were up to unfortunately 19.6%. Um, but that, and that, that would be what that rating was based on for the, you know, the last report card. Um, for the 24, 25 school year, we did bring that down over 2%, down to 17.4%. Uh, so we're hoping that improvement, um, will also make a significant difference, um, when it comes to that overall designation. So we're headed in the right direction on the ones where we have room for growth. Um, we will, uh, unfortunately just have to wait and see though if it's enough.
Yeah. Are those weighted differently? Each of those areas or how's that?
Yes. And you know, and I apologize, I don't have that pulled up right at the moment.
No worries.
I can get that waiting to you. I wanna, I wanna say chronic absenteeism is relatively high as well, maybe in that even 15 to 20% kind of range of the overall rating. Um, yeah, unfortunately, like the ones that we're knocking out of the park, like the proficiency ones are only like 5% of the, of the overall rating. Um, so, um, you know, the ones that count the most are the ones where we have the room for growth. Um, we are seeing it trending in the right direction though. So we'll, we'll see.
Now, being that you know the math, you know the breakdown.
Yeah.
You know what to track, right?
We know what to focus on. Yes.
Awesome.
Tori, does it, does it not also factor in what the other schools do, the junior high comparisons? I thought that was a factor too. Cause if they're going up, there's only a certain percentage that are exemplary.
Correct. Yes. So, um, to get that exemplary, um, designation, it is just the top 10%, right? Yeah, top 10%.
Yeah, that factors in too.
Yes.
Okay.
And just a quick question about the chronic, the absenteeism. So let's say a student misses like one period for a dental appointment. Is that the same as a whole day?
It's not a whole day, but it is a half day as far as the state's concerned. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. There's no such thing as a, anything, it's either a half day or a whole day as far as the state's concerned.
We have a lot of orthodontist appointments.
Uh, actually, I was thinking of that. You're at the right age for it.
Yes, yes.
So if they miss one, to clarify, if they miss one period for an orthodontist appointment, that counts as chronic absentee?
Well, no, that would count as a half day towards their total. So, so again, about 17 and a half or 18 days would, if they have more than 17 and a half days, um, they, they would be considered, you know, part of that chronic absenteeism number. So every one of those periods missed would, would be a half day. Yeah.
Do parents know this? I'm just interested. And I know some parents, it's, they have no choice. They have to schedule it when they can and.
Right.
But I'm just wondering is like, if, how much are?
I know we covered it last year when we were talking about, because I, I remember, um, Paula had the question on, I think on chronic absenteeism, but I, I don't know that parents are aware if that can.
No, that's true. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't hurt to give some more information.
I guess, you know, if, yeah.
I think there's a common kind of misconception between truancy and chronic absenteeism, um, because we have worked very hard with our students that are considered truant in terms of, um, motivating them to, we do, there are a couple of students where we do a daily mystery motivator where they get to pull off a post-it and it can be like a pride point or, um, earn 10 minutes of free time to do what you want. And so those students we're working very closely with, but the, the chronic absenteeism, a student could miss, we had a student last year who, um, broke both of his wrists two weeks before the end of the school year and he moved, he lost the last two weeks of school. He couldn't come to school. He couldn't do anything with his wrists. There was nothing we could do about that. And so that's one more student that kind of fell into that chronic absenteeism category. And so, you know, the state allows five mental health days. There are parents that still want to, you know, have that vacation with their kids. And so, um, as much as we can work to try to have kids coming every single day, there's a lot of stuff that's out of our control. And so that one's a really difficult one to pinpoint, um, and, and, you know, make that number kind of change.
Well, and it's, we've had this in prior board meetings where someone said, look at your, your chronic absentee, absenteeism, and it's been the confusion with truancy and whatever. And so it's, it's a really bad name really for, and a lot of it's to your point, out of, out of the control of everyone. It's in some cases, well, in case of a medical, like the wrist, it happens, right? Or, but if I had a choice, if I'm monitoring my, my students absenteeism going, oh, that's a half a day. Well, maybe I'll schedule that at 3:30 instead of 2:30. You know what I mean? Like, cause then we can partner with our parents so that number doesn't increase. I'm not sure if we, if that's a factor, you know, for these onesy twosy, but to Kay's point, there's a lot of orthodontistry going on at this age.
Yeah, for the whole year, that could be seven or eight appointments for one kid.
That's exactly. And so that just ticks up. And then if you just happen to, you know, want to leave town a day early for vacation, I'm not, that's just okay. I, I, not a, not a, not a criticism of anybody, but it's like, then you're like, well, well, that's okay, but you don't realize, oh, you just went above that threshold, right? Because you had those orthodontist appointments plus that one day, you know, that's, I'm just wondering just.
Maybe we can just share a bit, you know, a communication with parents on what counts as, you know, I mean, for the whole district, not just for the, the junior high. That's a good point, but.
And also emphasize that it goes towards our exemplary rating. I mean, that's what, that connecting to that, parents may not understand how that, you know.
We're also still coming out of, like, I hate to say the C word, but like during COVID, it was if you had the sniffles, you couldn't come to school. And so we're, we're right now still trying to train our parents of like when it's appropriate to send your kid to school and when you need to stay home. And that's changed in the past few years. And so, um, we still have parents that are like, well, shoot, um, you know, my kid has cold symptoms. Well, cold symptoms are different than, you know, fevers and things like that. And so there's a lot of education by our school nurse on to when to send your kids to school and when they need to stay home. And she's doing an excellent job, but we're all still like, I think the adults are still, you know, PTSD from like, if your child has a sniffles, they can't go to school, fearful of spreading anything. And so again, it's, I think we're gonna, you know, we're tackling it in a couple of different ways, but there, there are some things that are outside of our control.
Okay. Well, thank you. Uh, you know, your patient comes through, uh, very clearly. And, uh, when you look at the results for all that you've done and, you know, from last year with math on, but the iReady, IAR, the five essentials, your hard work has really paid off. So thank you so much. And thanks to your staff, obviously, and the students too. Great presentation. Thank you. Okay. Well, transition back into item nine, which is our committee reports, facilities.
Just talking a little bit about next month though. Are you sure you want the high school and the elementary to both go on the same night? Or would you prefer we break it up? At one point, um, there was talk of having the elementary and the junior high in the same meeting. They weren't able to be here tonight for the elementary. Would you like both the high school and the elementary to present next month? Or would you prefer one?
I, I personally think there's a lot of time that can be devoted just to one at each, I, I would rather have them broken up, but whatever.
I'd rather have them broken up because I feel like the, the, the school that goes second would end up rushing and we wouldn't get like a full presentation.
So who should I notify there on?
Well, let's, let's get everybody. Paula, what's, what's your feelings?
I was just going to agree with that. And that also gives us more time to look at their materials in advance.
Greg, your feeling?
I'm, I'm good with it and they can do rock, paper, scissors for next month.
Yeah, rock, paper, or if one has a preference, like if one feels like they need another month to present.
Heather, you good with that too?
For them.
Okay. All right. We'll let you decide who's gonna present.
The ones themselves. Okay.
Excellent.
And then, um, talking about the exemplary, uh, versus, you know, the different categories. The state superintendent had mentioned at a recent meeting that not for the year that we're living now, but the following years, um, they're not going to use that 10%, only 10% are in that top category. They're going to have a certain level. So similar to what we have for the academic excellence, for those who've been around for a while, it used to be the top 10 dinner and there's only 10 seats. And we said, why are we comparing? Why are we fighting each other with this? Like, if you can hit a certain threshold, you'll meet it. And so they don't yet know what that threshold will be, but it'll no longer be only 10% of the state gets that top category. It'll be a, a certain threshold, similar to what we would do with students and, and even their grades. We don't say there can only be 10% of you that get an A. Like if you earn an A and you're at that level, you get an A. So, um, we'll share that information a year from now, but for the year that we just reparted on tonight, it'll still be the same way.
Great. Thank you. That'd be helpful. Okay. Now we'll go into our committee reports. Nine A is, um, the facilities master planning did not meet. Nine B, finance, we met earlier this evening.
We did for 19 scintillating minutes.
Okay, it was, it was. Okay. And nine C, uh, policy did not meet. Um, we did have a question come up or I, I shared that email, uh, from, uh, ISB, um, about whether or not to look into, um, the press policies. And I guess I'd, you know, if we want to spend time now, if you want to think about that for the next meeting, maybe we could have that as a, as a topic for our next meeting, um, under policy and C, you know, it'd be a quick response, but I know it's getting late. So maybe, uh, it's up to you guys if you want to make any decisions on that now or wait. Paula, what's your thoughts?
I, I'm fine to wait till the next meeting.
Okay. But we, we won't have, it, maybe it won't be in the next policy. If it's in there, then we'll, I mean, the next press packet. So that'll, that'll jog our memories to make sure that it's included. So vision 202, um, there's a summary in there, uh, from what we're going to be looking at. Keith, did you want anything?
Yeah, I won't. I just wanted to, to let the board know that, um, Eric has met with groups of about eight to 10 students at a time. His goal is to talk to about 20 students per grade. And so at this point, I think he's had six of those meetings. And so I'm sure they'll touch upon that when they have their school improvement plan. But, uh, that was something that we wanted to accomplish this year. And initially I was kind of hoping Eric would do it his first year, but I think because he's been able to build the relationships that he had his first year, which was last year, I think students are really opened up to him and give their perspective. So, um, again, I'll let them share everything that they've learned, but I think the conversations have really, really been good. And it's, he randomly picked, uh, selected those 20 students. So it wasn't, who would like to volunteer to talk to me? And then you wind up seeing, you know, the students who would love to volunteer, like this was randomly picking students. So we had a nice cross mix of, uh, students and the types of conversations. So more to come.
Great. Thank you. Um, 10, item 10 is our board representative reports. 10 A is home and school. Paula did an excellent write-up from her, uh, attendance at the council meeting. And, um, any questions on that? There's 10 B is ISB delegate to board.
Just the division meeting on October 29th, but it's also the same night as the Bennett, Lyle Bennett jazz concert. So keep that in your plan, in mind. Also, of course, November 21st through 23rd is the triple I meeting.
And if you haven't already, please let Marilyn know by October 1st on both of those meetings if you can. Okay. The, the only other thing, we, we just, just got hot off the press, a letter from ISB. Uh, dear members of the Board of Education, congratulations. Your Board of Education is one of 42 to earn the Illinois Association of School Boards 2025 School Board Governance Recognition Designation. The recognition is designed to acknowledge those school boards that have engaged in activities and modeled behaviors that lead to excellence in local school governance in support of quality public education. Um, commend you on your hard work and distinction as a school board governance records, recognition recipient. So we're proud to receive that again. Want to thank Dan especially. We worked on, on that. You did the, the bulk of the work on, on compiling everything together, but it's really on what we do. Things like going to these division meetings, going to the joint conference contribute to that. So appreciate everybody's efforts and thanks for summarizing it. So it's exciting. Okay. Um, intergovernmental did not meet. Uh, Len, the, uh, meeting highlights are there. I think there's a reoccurring theme in there about the loss in revenue for transportation. That seems to be the theme through a lot of different things. Um, also the, um, uh, the legislative from our attorneys, that summary is in there also. If you weren't, Paula and I were able to participate in that as Jason and, and Keith were too. So, um, the summary is, is there. The slides are there. There's a lot of good information. The complexity gets, you know, once we get into special needs, um, categories, it gets very complex. So Lyle Education Foundation, those minutes are attached there. A grant was approved. So, um, I think those are all the summaries and were in there. The other thing, uh, Paula and I participated in the legislative update. That was on August 18th. And again, main emphasis there was title one, Medicaid, it costs reductions for Medicaid. I was surprised to learn that one of two children in the state are on Medicaid. So those will be, have a significant impact on some of the benefits. Also talking about, um, uh, the, the impact that, um, transportation will be on, and on McKinney Ventle. So a lot of, a lot of different, um, aspects of it. The one thing that, that was interesting was that the new, the person that's the legislative liaison, uh, was Kristen Fitzgerald, was formerly on the District 203, 203 School Board and the board president for several years, um, in Naperville. And when she decided not to run again, she was also on the Len Executive Board. It was asking her what, how, what, what avenue she could go into. So she has a legislative background. So she went the, when, there's a life after the board now. She's working for, uh, ISB, but she did an excellent job, I thought. And Paula, we talked about it afterward. She could really relate to school board work was the nice thing.
Very clear and, and direct and helpful information that, that was shared.
That was good. It was a good, it was a good session. Um, so assassid, uh, did not meet, uh, brings us to item 11, agenda topics for future board meetings. Did we have any uh, in there? Okay. Well then, if not, I will entertain a motion, uh, at 9:38 to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, performance, discipline, compensation, or dismissal of employees and security procedures, school building, safety, and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual threatened or reasonably per. potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, the public or public property. Could I have a motion, please? Okay, second, please?
Second.
Okay, so it's roll call, please.
Mr. Helderly?
Aye.
Ms. No, or, um, Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Novacel?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Nagler?
Aye.
Ms. D. Domenico?
Aye.
Ms. Sims is an aye, and Ms. Alman?
Aye, thank you. And we will adjourn to closed session at 9:39.